Welcome to the channel everybody for a PLO study stream using the Bucket Tool. I'm not 100% set up yet, give me like a minute or two? I could have gone with the countdown, that would have made it easier for me I guess. Alright, so we got some music here, let me put up the tweet. And we'll be ready in a second. Yeah, there was a bit of an unscheduled stream happening here for the last half hour on Smitty's stream, a newest addition to the Run and Run streamer team, nice to see another PLO streamer there. And from what I heard, he's looking to do this full-time as well, the streaming, I don't know about the streaming, but the playing at least. So that'll be an interesting journey to follow, if you haven't followed him, check out Smitty on his Twitch channel, oh I need to switch the song, this one is way too involved for a study stream. Alright, so the tweet is out. And it's not taken care of. And we're actually gonna dive back into his spot that we had during the last study stream, ooh I need to open the poll, right? Alright, so first things first, let's go to this view then. This up here, the study spot is still the same, I'll put up the poll right now. And... That was, yeah, because that was the spot... So first of all, that was the spot that was wholly confusing, it was the first study stream I ever came out of being more confused than going in. And I had planned on finding something and checking out the spot like in a Mastermind video or a Run and Runz video over the weekend, but honestly, I didn't find the time for it to do it. So it's more or less unprepared, or at least not that prepared than last time, we're gonna jump into the same spot yet again. And yeah, prepare to be baffled. At least I'm prepared to be baffled. And it was on 1088, huh? Yeah, it was this one. Okay... And we had some, yeah, we had some buckets applied to this one as well apparently. And I think we'll just dive right back in, because these buckets actually worked out pretty nicely in the sense that the answers, I think it was the first time that me and by extension Twitch chat was wrong, more often than not. On the 1088, single suited, so what's the spot? We are the button, the cut-off opens as a raise first, and we three-bet the cut-off, the cut-off cards, cut-off checks to us on a flop of 1088. Prepare to have your mind blown in a couple of spots, because at least I know I am. So... Right up the first one here, queen 1096, where we don't block front or backdoor flushes, we don't have them, we, yeah, don't have, we got nothing except a pair and double gutter right now, right? Let's see, why can't I reuse this tree? Ah, I guess I have to make up the poll questions again, sorry, we'll do that, and then we'll get this party started. And the options are to check with a three-bet. Same, check. Just sitting the poll, almost done. Alright, there you go, I think the poll should be up on the screen now. Yeah. So, is this gonna be a check, is this gonna be mixed? Gonna be a bet, I don't know, I'm completely... Well, not completely clueless, but I'm a little bit unsure after all the wrong answers I had during the last stream studying this spot. Um, let's think about this. Stock raising, which is maybe sometimes it is a bet. There's not many great turns anyway. Ice splash rolls, come and help me out, coming in with the bet here, yeah, I think I'm starting to like it. Um, let's see, let's see. 100% check, for the record, I would have gone in with a bet here as well. Okay. So, nothing with the gutter and the backdoor jack-high flush draw. I'll upload this video to YouTube in the next days, and there, and the title I'll put in the spot, and I'll do this for all the previous streams, in case you want to check out the previous study streams, it'll make it easier. Push roll spelling here again. So... Here's what I think, at at runtime, like at the tables up until now, I would check this basically 100% frequency. And I suppose, if it is a bet, it's certainly gonna be a bet fault. Yeah, so up until now, I would have checked this 100%, but I suspect that you have a good point here, Ice Splash Rolls. So I'm gonna click, I'm gonna do what I would have done up until now, and gonna click the check button, but I'm not saying that that's gonna be correct. Not only is it not correct, it's 100% not correct. That is what is so infuriating about this spot, that I keep, at least it's infuriating me, anyway, anyway. Nicely done there, Ice Splash Rolls, also welcome back to the channel. Alright, alright, alright. So this time we have nothing but a pair, I think with a pair we... So in heads-up PLO, we would bet this at some clip, which of course doesn't apply here. Again, I would check it back at runtime. So if this is gonna be another 100% c-bet, I think we're switching spots, okay, no, this time it is a check. Good. So very much a medium-strong hand here on this board I would say. So the medium-strong ones? Do we, is there enough reason to bet trying to take it down right now? If we get raised, we still need to let it go, right, on a paired board with two spades? I would assume we need to let it go. You had betted here, huh? We did check a similar hand, the queen 1096, but Devon just had a pair in the gutter, this time we have a pair in an open-ender. I'm still gonna go for the check as a medium-strong hand, curious to see what's correct here. So mixed strategies, slightly favoring betting? Okay, I guess I can live with that. Go on, suit variations for this one? Wait, where did it go? Variations, there you go. Like what changes, this one has, where did this one go now? This one has a backdoor flush draw and we don't block spades. We bet at 61%, we bet it more if we have, okay, there we have the open-end straight flush draw, but we also bet at a slightly higher frequency with absolutely no redraws, or no, no flush draws. Interesting enough. But if we have this, but that's with a spade blocker, the one we bet at a decent-ish frequency. If we don't have a spade blocker, like there's two outliers here which get bet at over 50%, but otherwise it's a low betting frequency, very much. This has a backdoor flush draw, this one is a backdoor flush draw, so with the backdoor flush draw we bet more often. But this one, also backdoor flush draw, this one also backdoor flush draw. And which ones do we bet at 100%, let's see? Two backdoors here with the straight flush, then the king high, the second nut flush draw? Yeah, the king high. Alright, alright. 1097, so very similar hand. She did the jack, gives us a better straight now, let me put up the poll again. Bet here. Yeah, you know what, judging by what we've seen on the other hand, this is probably even more of a bet? Yeah, a little bit more of a bet, but still very much like 60/40, 65/35 in this case, rounding up slightly. Alright. So maybe we will get to grips with this spot. Okay, the quads. I guess the most interesting would be, is it gonna be 100% one or the other? Is it gonna be 100% check? I would say no, it's not gonna be 100%. I think there's gonna be some betting here, one I sort of, or a mix for, I would, I'm assuming, like building a pot and balancing betting range a little bit, because we also bet some very weak stuff apparently. But yeah, we don't have a spade, well, we don't block any of these cards, maybe that's, makes it slightly more of a of a bet then. So I'm gonna go with the check myself, clearly, but I'm gonna be curious about these numbers here. 100%, alright, 100%. But yeah, yeah, you're, um, let's check out, let's check out other 88 hands. Without 1010. Checking all of them, alright. Is there, like if we take this one out with the tens, just checking 100% of our quads here? More of a bet if we block his cards, if we don't block his cards, yeah, but I would assume so too. But apparently this time around, the quads here, just get checked at 100%. Alright. And now we have the second nuts with the straight blocker. Um, any reason? Hmm, let's see. Probably a lot of checking here as well, right? This is one of the strongest hands we can show up with here, so if the quads get checked 100%, question is is this, I don't think this is gonna be 100%, I think this will be mixed, we unblock spades, unblock overpairs, which is nice, we don't have a king or anything like that. On the other hand, we had an ace, yeah, so we were, yeah, blocking aces as well, which, blocking aces here is not a big deal. Because our opponents shouldn't have aces basically ever, once we three-bet him before the flop. No, that is very interesting. And I think those are the reasons, we unblock kings, queens, jacks, and let's check out other 108 hands. And Luke Barter at the channel, hey, 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 good to see you! Oh, I sent you a message on Discord, I already got your answer, I'll reply back after the stream. So let's check out other 108 hands here, and see if something changes if we have a king, a queen there. I guess the ace is not all that important, although it does protect us from somebody else having an eight with an ace. Let's see. Let's take out 1010 and take out 88, and take out his ace, I guess... Maybe not the ace ace. Hey, thank you very much Luke, appreciate you saying that. Could probably get it in versus, yeah, yeah. Play a little bit casual focus music in the background, I know, yeah. A bit of the, probably the more unusual music for the stream, but this particular metal song I kinda dig. So... With the ace queen, we bet a little bit, we even bet 100%, let's see what we don't bet at a high frequency, sort of by probability here. Scroll down a little bit, actually a fair bit. So there are some combinations not blocking flushes that bet close to 100%, now we're getting into... Okay, so here we bet a little bit less, now we block kings and jacks. And our opponent is gonna show up with, you know, some kings here for sure. So the jack also blocks the straight draw, if we unblock the straight draw now, we bet more. Again, no backdoor flushes with these hands. And now for lower frequency ones. 865, so here we have a flush draw in there, that's an interesting one. That's an interesting one, because it's very similar to the hand we are showing up with here. As in our other two side cards cannot make us a better hand. But with two spades, so which we bet at 100% frequency. With two spades, with the flush draw, we are checking half here, that's curious. And I think something like this, because we've seen this bet at a higher frequency, this is, I would attribute to solver voodoo a little bit. Again, with the king, blocking the kings, we bet a little less, alright. So it seems to be the case, with Broadway cards, we, and no flush draws, we bet a little less. Or if we block draws, if you like the queen-jack-10 here, the dotted-out card is the queen, due to an issue on my end, it's being dotted out. Um, yeah, so if we block the draws, we are much more intent on checking, letting our opponent catch up a little bit. Also, he can't, you know, not catch up a little bit, sorry, he cannot, he doesn't have as many draws in there, so he cannot call, go like, okay, I call, I have a gutter, I have the open end or whatever. Cool. Interesting one. Here, I almost don't wanna guess myself. This is the spot where so far I've been for this exact board and this exact situation, I've been wrong a lot. But I would check what bet it. Hmm. MP Adam finding some time, hey, good to see you here mate. Floater1 in the channel, good to see you sir. How's life been treating you in Malta, MP Adam? So, I'm gonna click the two just because you clicked it Luke Barter, I have nothing here, I have, actually I have no input, I hesitate to guess. That's awesome to hear Adam, very nice. 100% check? Luke Barter says OMG, the game gets boring if you can't bet ahead like this, yeah, that's a good point. Oh, you have the Corona as an issue there as well, yeah, why, I'm not surprised, who hasn't these days? Ice Splash Rolls, yeah, that would be my guess as to why we don't wanna bet here as well. But Luke, I had the spot in the last stream, and that was the first study stream ever where I came out of it being more confused than going in. Because me and Twitch chat were wrong more often than not. Yeah, so obviously I hope that all of the Corona worries pass you by, MP Adam. I guess it's nice that most of your work happens over the phone, right? Or over the internet, so you don't need to get in the contact with people that much. So, is there any point in checking out suit variations? Is there gonna be anything interesting hidden there? So the ones where we don't have the, yeah. We sort of bluff these, because if we get raised, we need to let go. The ones where we don't have a, the front door flush draw for sure, so no spades, unblocking spades. I guess, some of them have a some of them have a backdoor flush draw. And as soon as we add spades into the mix, the frequencies go down. ArmFG, good to see you back! Welcome back sir. Yeah. So we don't wanna get raised here, if we have a flush draw, it seems, there's one hand, that one has the front and the backdoor flush draw, which is pretty similar to the one we have, the only difference being that here we have the perfectly single-suited 9 out of 7 of different suits. Interesting, interesting. Next hand, the quads again, well, the quads, we now have a spoiler, but for those of you who haven't seen the spoiler a couple of minutes ago when we checked out a similar hand, I can leave up the poll for a second. So again, went skiing, oh nice. I'm not gonna say anything, because yeah, we already checked out a very similar hand earlier. So in the previous hand with quads, my assumption was that sometimes you bet here. Because why not? Trying to, you know, further build a pot, although it already is a three-bet pot here where we are in position. And it turns out that all the quad hands get checked, no matter the side cards, 100% checking here. This time we have the gutter again, and the backdoor flush draw, I wonder if this backdoor flush draw will make a difference? Yeah, I thought so too Floater, because I would have figured, you know, we bet at a decent frequency, I see quads I just bet, yeah, I would sit a bet like that too. Mash the pot button. No, maybe not that. Yeah, let me bring up the lights a little bit, it is getting darkish outside. One here. For the... They are, they are very interesting Luke. Like this spot drove me nuts during the last stream. So for the record, Floater for example, I would check here as well, or I would have up until now. I have a feeling, this is gonna be a better decent frequency, and I wonder, I actually would guess now that without backdoor diamonds, we bet at 100%? Which we know, yeah, sure, sure, oh yeah, sorry, sorry, I didn't see there for a second, thank you, didn't see if it was out of frame. So I'm still gonna go with the bet, based on what I've seen so far doing this in the last stream, and I'd be curious to see if the diamonds will make a difference. Okay, so I bet at a high frequency, which I would have always checked here. So let's, yeah, need to move this out of the way for a second, let's go with the ace queen jack for our exact hand. And see which ones we check. So we check it with an with some flush draws. And we bet at a 100% frequency, we have the front and the backdoor, okay? Interesting, so this is just... Wait, what? Okay, I got nothing about, like, why this was 100% check and this 100% bet. I mean, I do notice that this one is ideally single, double suited, this one ain't. And I don't think it makes a difference in reality, but it apparently makes a big difference to the solver here, so I would attribute these two to solver voodoo. If we have the nut flush draw, we are getting a little bit less interest in betting. If we don't have a flush draw at all, we get more interest, yeah, so that's basically what I was trying to figure out. If we take away the backdoor diamonds here, we are starting to bet at a higher frequency, cool. Figured as much, but only, you know, since recently, since we have none of these streams. So what about this one? We do have the gutter to a straight flush, which does seem to make a difference to the straight flushes draws, even if it's just a gutter, does seem to make a difference to the solver. Would you bet overall with the range? That is an excellent question, let's, we'll check this out, we will check this out, I guess we can check it out right now, hang on. So, so we have some buckets in here, right? With middle-low pairs, we check a lot. With double-suited ones, with single-suited rainbow, we are betting more. Alright, so we have fewer, well, we have fewer flush draws, fewer double flush draws here. Making the hand weaker, i.e. making us want to bet more, with rundowns, double-suited. We bet a lot, which is to me surprising. Then we have single-suited rainbow rundowns, again, bet at a higher frequency, same even though the difference is smaller, but it's the same with the middle-low pairs, as soon as we are single-suited or rainbow, we start betting a little bit more. Then we have three Broadways, non-Broadways, so we're gonna have a lot of blockers, a lot of gutters, a lot of blockers to draws here, I mean. And we're gonna be double-suited, we are gonna be double-suited always, betting at a very high frequency. Two Broadways, two low connectors. Slightly higher, and the highest betting frequency we have for double-suited three-card rundowns plus a Broadway. Okay, so yeah, in which case we are hitting something around this board or on this board quite often. Double-suited rack, we bet a lot, double-suited double pair, we check more often, alright, cool. Bringing us back to this hand. I think we bet at a decent frequency, I would actually guess that we bet it more often than we check it. But with range, what do you mean Luke? Oh, right, right, what do we do, like in general, do we bet the range that we show up with here, all hands? Um, duh, 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 duh. I'll probably have to remove all the buckets for this. Ruklasing looks like a bet. Oh, we don't? Good to see you Ruklasing. Okay, so I'm gonna go with the bet here as well, but I'm curious to see Luke saying no, but I assume I don't need to remove the buckets, so I'll, I'll be curious. 100% check? Hundred percent check. All right, so I'm right, that might just be it. That's gonna be it, Luke. I think that'll work. Yeah, yeah. So we see that 60%. Generally speaking. Yeah, and we have aces in here, which are not part of the bucket, so this is gonna, this is our entire range for sure. Yeah, thank you for asking. I wouldn't have thought to to check that. Okay. What can we figure out about this hand? If anything, King Jack, 10, 7. So if we are let's go with the double suited one. Well, I guess we only have double suited ones here. If you three bet, so that's not gonna make a difference. Can we filter for spades yet? Ooh, something happened. Dresi, thank you very much for the follow. Appreciate it. Can we filter for two spades? I don't know if it works like this. Um, spade, spade, maybe? Nah, I doubt it. No, I don't know if we can filter for this right now in the bucket tool. It might be that the syntax for this needs to be implemented. But I mean, you know, there are not that many hands here. Oh, good point. Yeah. That would have done it as well. Yeah, next time, okay. Because now I got the same thing effectively here. I forgot about it. Luke, thank you. So the frequency goes up with the have the King High flush draw with the backdoor. Then we want to bet this a lot. And we also want to bet it if we're weaker, if we don't have a backdoor flush draw that mirrors what we've seen in other spots with other hands. Okay. So we have the Jack blocker, we have the backdoor flush draw, we have a spade blocker and we have a top pair. So there are some decent turns for us, right? A queen, a queen of diamonds would be pretty baller. But that's not many. That's not many great turns. Another 10 would be fun for sure. A king would be, yeah, okay, I'll take it. An ace would be, okay, I'll take it, but not that many turns. So maybe we don't hate getting raised. As in, we just let it go and one thusly wanna see bet at a decent clip, but we do have the backdoor flush draw again. Not flush draw, not least. So I'm gonna go with the check here. Yeah, do we hate getting, we do hate getting raised. Yeah, exactly. That's I hope I didn't, maybe I said it wrong, but that's what I was, what I meant. Oh, wait, wait, wait. Hang on. No, it's not. Sorry. Yeah, I figured in the, if you get raised, it's straightforward in the sense that we just let it go with without the too many heartaches. Um, let's see. Hundred percent bet. And that's where this spot just gets wild every time. Let's check out the suit variations then. I would assume without the backdoor flush draw, we want to bet more. Yeah, this is a lull spot from start to finish this one. I had already a stream covering this one. It was infuriating. Okay, so the weakest ones. Now with a backdoor flush draw blocker or, you know, three of that suit, we bet at the high frequency. No flush draws, better than 100% frequency. Blockers, blockers to the backdoor, blockers to the front door. Hundred percent. Lockers, single backdoor, okay, better than 100% as well, like two card backdoor flush, I mean. Checking is still better against, yeah, I would wouldn't necessarily disagree. Let's see, where does the checking at a decent clip start? That's 95%. Let's ignore that. So we check at a some at some frequency without backdoors, but the King blocker. King Diamond blocker. And not flush draw. Do we bet with the not flush draw? No. Actually, we do. Tell a lie, we do. So the front of the backdoor and only one front door. Sometimes a blocker, sometimes no, this is checked, better 100%. Okay, cool. Then we have this one, which gets, I don't quite see what the difference is to from this one to the other ones we just saw, but I got nothing here, so I'll just take that one as face value. Without a spade blocker here and the backdoor, we start betting less often. We go back to flashes, we start betting less often, no blocker. All right. Yeah, can't come up, can't come up with anything beyond what this window is showing. Or like even too many reasons for why it's showing what it's showing, to be honest. So a gutter with the weaker backdoor, no spades. Hmm. Floater would bet here. I would, you know, given from what you've seen so far, I would probably bet it as well. Yeah, right. Can't be that much different from the Ace Queen Jack four from earlier. Yeah, exactly. I mean, the seven blocks some of our opponents' wraps a little bit, like, you know, medium like rapish type of hands, random type of hands. He's gonna call a three bet before the flop. So maybe the seven actually does make a difference. A little bit. Let's see. I'll go with the bet as well. Hundred percent. Phew. All right, all right, cool. Again, suit variations. I'd be curious. I'm basically only looking at nut diamonds now. That's the only one that would interest me. Some of these are checked. Okay, so if we have both nut diamonds and Queen High spades here, that one would be a check. Yeah, there's way, you know, there's so many things to keep in mind in PLO. But like the now you can't even say the very strongest one, because it also gets better to decent frequency. So yeah, just bet at 100%, like why these are being checked now? I couldn't tell you. No clue. Solvable. I'll file it under solvable voodoo. But yeah, betting, betting seems good here is would be my takeaway. Um. Okay, so I have a, I have my guess locked in. Couldn't say too much about it just yet. Lot of betting happening here, all right. Hey, Tonic, welcome to the channel, mate. Betting unanimously, huh? Okay, I'll be, I'll be the outlier. I'll check here. But I'm gonna put the Twitch chat answer in for the record. And it is very much mixed, slightly favoring checking. So let's go to suit variations again. Good to see you. So which ones do we better the high frequency? The ones with the backdoor? Better, those be better the highest frequency? The ones with one of the suits that are not on the on the board? We've seen that in previous streams, like if you have three suits and hard is not among them and it's a mixed strategy, we tend to bet more with the hand that has hearts in it. And a flush draw. That's, that was my thinking, why I was leaning towards checking there, Tonic. That's precisely it there. Realizing equity and plenty of good turns that you know, sometimes you're drawing essentially dead here, but still. Um. Barring these cases, I think we are way more interested in seeing a turn we, yeah. Than with other hands where we go like, okay, we bet fold this easy peasy. Bet folding here kind of hurts a little bit. So which ones do we check at 100% frequency? That'll be interesting to see. And it is except for this one outlier here with the Jack High flush. Oh, that's the open and straight flush. Okay. So the open and straight flush gets checked a lot. We don't fold versus raise here with this hand. Yeah, I guess we can't, yeah. Sparku, good to see you. Especially, yeah, that's true. On those runouts, we are, we enjoying that. So we checked if we don't have spades, basically those are 100% checks. And if we have the open and straight flush draw, do we bet an open and straight flush draw? No, well, this one with the where we have the front and the backdoor. We sometimes bet. Cool. So spades are what makes us want to bet here. Even more so if we have the backdoor flush draw as well. Cool. How about this one then? This doesn't even qualify as a medium strong hand. This is just a pretty weak hand, right? We do have a pair, we unblock Kings and Queens. Which in a three bet pot the cutoff is showing up with at a reasonable frequency, I would say. We don't have spades. Hmm. So is this one where we bet it more once we have spades? Because my thinking would be too, you know, like seeing what we've seen so far. Just bet it here and then, you know, we'll let it go if we get raised. That's fine. Maybe we can take it down right now. Especially holding that that Jack is probably a and the six also blocking, you know, draws in general a little bit. I'd be interested to see this one with spades. See bet 100%. But I'm saying bet fold, yeah, bet fold for sure. Um. Or like the folding part for sure. And apparently the betting, you're absolutely right, Luke. Low EV by checking and weak playability. Yeah, yeah. Like there's no turn where that makes us go like, hey. So how about them spades? Hmm, the Jack High spades, we check and we check it with Jack High spades and the Ace store, Ace backdoor, Ace High backdoor. Flush draw and everything else gets better than 100%. So not spades get better than 100%. And everything else. All right, so the weakest, the weakest flush draw we could show up with here, we can sometimes check. And I guess kind of an interesting takeaway would be in a spot where we hate getting raised slightly more since we have the backdoor not flush, then we check at a very high frequency. Cool. Spoke to the results. The results are not up to date. Actually, for this month, we're probably up like 20-ish buy-ins. So, oh, God, we should notice. Since we kind of checked a very similar hand out earlier. But honestly, I don't remember. I have the window open, but I'm gonna hide it right now, because I don't want to look at it. Don't want to spoil myself. Yeah, I had the windows with the previous hands open. Oh, I didn't start the poll, sorry. Let's crush March. Jane Addis in the house as well. Good to see you, sir. So far, March is shaping up to be a nice month. I'm very curious to see how the Power Fest is playing out, because I've been playing more than 40 events there. So float a betting here. Um, I don't remember, man. Checked a very similar hand out. Yeah, I do remember. I think I do remember. I believe this is a bet at a high, if not 100% frequency. Yeah. Yeah. And once we have like a king or jack, like a king, jack in there, we start checking a good deal more often. Like a King Jack 10-8, Queen Jack 10-8. Once we start blocking opponent's draws. I believe that was the result from the last, yeah. From the last 10-8 hand we checked out, whereas if we have, you know, two lower side cards than a 10-8, we just better than 100%. Apparently. King, King, 10-10. All right, all right. Flop in the second nuts here. Blocking the opponent's Kings. Opponent doesn't have aces, so since we, you know, we three bet in pre and he's out of position, so he should be forbidding his aces. Pretty much always for 100 big lines, I would say. So do we want to bet this? And that'd be interesting to check this one out without the Kings. Like a 10-10. Do we three bet a 10-10 7-6? I doubt it. Jack 10-9 maybe? Something like that, that we're gonna three bet. Some, I guess. Um. So we want to bet, do we want to check here? I just want to say, Jane Addis, I've been saying it earlier, this is the most, has been the most infuriating spot to check out so far. I had a previous stream on this one. And that was the first study stream I left, more confused than going in. So this is a fun one. I'm gonna go with the check here. And I'd be curious to see the frequencies, if it's like a 100% deal for one or the other, or if it's very much mixed. Actually, say it's gonna be a check at a high frequency. No, okay. Don't matter. We bet this one. Curious, so what 10-10s? Maybe with LD. Well, actually, even with the aces, probably doesn't matter too much. Which ones don't we bet with the aces? Okay, so apparently that does matter. Because we check out of these then? No. So which ones do we check? Which 10s do we check? Is it that many? It's not that many that we check at 100% frequency here. Let's check these out. We have a Jack or a nine. Here we have the 10-8. Okay, cool. So blocking the wraps, blocking the open enders makes it a check 1%. Yeah, check the ones with a nine or eight pretty much, right? And then at a lower frequency, the ones where we block the nut flush, I guess. Here we block the nut flush, have the backdoor, block the backdoor, King High flush as well. And if we have the nut flush draw, we also check at 100% of the time. Very interesting. Okay, so basically if we block our opponent's continuation ranges, which here we don't at all. No Jack, no Queen, no nine, no seven. I think that sort of makes sense. Okay, but no trapping going on here, just betting 100%, which I guess also makes sense. We're betting, we're betting so much crap that we are looking to bet fold here. And two ton flops. All right, good to know. Luke Barter saying top set and the nut flush blocker is just too strong, is just gets checked very often. And I think instinctively, that's what a lot of us would do at runtime too. But thank you, thank you for pointing that out. It's the next one. So here we have Babkus with a gutter and a backdoor King High. So here we have bubkas with a gutter and the backdoor king high. Lashra. Seeing that we have a little bit of equity. I'll, I'll wait, I'll be curious to see what you guys put in. Very interesting, I have one word for check. Personally, I'm gonna go for the bet. Want to point out, up until now at the tables, I wouldn't have, I would have checked this 100%. So yeah. Think I'm down for the betting here. And it is bet at a very high frequency, which just falls in line with what we've seen. That, you know, we're bluffing with a tiny bit of equity here. So if, if we get raised, we still let it lay down, obviously. But if we get called, we can either, you know, we can reevaluate turns, basically. No pair, just bet. Let's see if that holds up, that would be an easy rule. That'd be nice. Here. Hmm. Run on, Luke. Man down, slam the bet button, yes, just pop, 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 pop it. This is, you know, the, as far as draws are concerned, excluding, you know, hands that have flush draw, this is pretty much the best we can show up with, right? So I wouldn't be shocked if this goes into the checking range. Or at a decent clip and probably bet this one with the flush draw more often. Let's see. Anybody voting for betting? No. Yeah, 95% check, so that is more than fine, that's just for, you know. Sake of my sanity, I always tend to translate 95% to 100%. Suit variations, wait, there's a window there somewhere, it's just hidden in the background, I believe. Hmm, for some, it's there, I just don't see it, it's hidden behind something on my desktop and I don't want to go digging for it, so let's do this differently. And just go with, do it here, so it was the queen jack, nine, seven, that was suited. Yeah, better with spades, with the, not nuts spades, but the high, the higher, the mid-high spades at a high frequency. 100% if we have the backdoor. Flush draw as well. 100% if we have the hearts, if you have one of the suits that are not on the board, so hearts and/or clubs here. Also falls into line with what we've seen previously. Skin check nine, sure, let's check it out. That one. We bet at a high frequency, it's, uh, so the weaker we are, the while still having equity. The more likely we are to bet. I think, do we check it with a nut flush draw a bit? Yeah, a bit. We bet it with the blockers and the backdoor. Or just the blocker, like the, the flush blockers or backdoor flush blockers. And bet it with, uh, the ace king of spades, 100%. With the weakest ones again, that have no backdoors, no, no backdoor blockers really. Ace, ace, jack nine, that's an interesting one too. That's an interesting one. Betting more often now? Gonna slam the bet, yeah, so I guess here the most interesting would be to check out which ones we are not betting. Which ones we're checking at 100% frequency, so three spades, check at 100%. Okay, here we have the open, no, no, it's not the three spades, it's the open and straight flush, right? Uh, no, it is, it is the three spades. Or rather having the nut flush on top. Because just the open, uh, open and straight flush, we bet at 100%. Negative ace of spades checks, because it has to bet fold, yeah, sounds good to me. Checks at a very high frequency. Bet the weakest ones, we bet some with the ace of spades, but yeah, not at a high frequency, so let's not dive too deeply into that. Yeah, so we bet it with, uh, the spades, we bet it without spades, like better with the nuts spades, with the straight flush draw and then all the weaker ones without spades, we better 100% tie, uh, where we have, here we have a ace high backdoor pretty much always. Or a block, ace high blocker, backdoor blocker always. Alright, cool. Where did on a window B, here? Alright, so I have a feeling about this one. But I ain't gonna, I'm not gonna say anything. Yeah, what with everything we've seen. I would guess this is a bet if not at 100%, then at a very high frequency. So I'd say so too. 100% matter of fact, cool. We're slowly getting somewhere this time around, the first stream was just infuriating, checking out the same spot. Now we're slowly getting a handle on it, I feel. Which I'm rather happy about. How about this one here? Well, my first thought would be, I don't know. My second thought would be at runtime so far, I would have checked this 100%. But, but we've been looking into this for a while now, so Does it change anything for me personally? So we don't block draws, right? We block the king high flush draw, which is something. And we have the king high flush draw, which also is something. Um. It seems good, hate to get raised, that might be a really good point here. Check out suit variations in a second, see if that makes any difference with this hand. Do we block kings a little bit? I'm gonna go with the check as well. Yeah, or just a pair of five, good enough for a bad fault, it might be it. I'd be very, I'm gonna be very curious about the frequencies here. 100% check, alright, 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 cool, so far so good. Is there any betting going on? Where is my variations window? Hang on, let me see if I can dig it up. No, I can't, it's hidden somewhere. Alright, we'll just do the old fashioned way then. Just know that we could click on variations and it, it works, it's just I hit the window somewhere and I can't get it back, so. No biggie. Well, you know, what's initially interesting about this is that this is a three bet. But I guess we're less, like before the flop, we are in a three bet spot, remember, in position and on the button versus the cutoff, but I guess this is a bluff three bet. So, you know, we happily fold this against the four bet. And we're less interested in seeing a flop, so calling, I, I guess if we're suited to the ace, we call here a lot pre. Rather than raising. Because then we can also play this on multibail much better. Right, so do, is there any betting going on? Let's see, which ones do get bet? Okay, so the ones that bet have the nut flush blocker. And there's a mixy between the backdoor king high flush and just no flush blockers at all, or no backdoor flush, no backdoor or flush blockers at all. In fear and hey, welcome back. Guess we like to have a blocker near, or nearby blocker to the board, yeah, yeah. I think so, like a nine, a jack. A queen. Okay, so maybe just, you know, these outliers here, there's again so many things to remember in PLO, just check it at 100% no matter what, with this and a very similar hand like the ace king. Six, six, well, you know what? Do the sixes make a difference? They might start to make a difference. They do indeed, but just means that we're checking at 100% here. How about sevens then? Like sevens, nines. Okay, sevens, we start betting, that's where it starts to get interesting. Also at decent frequencies here. The blocker with the backdoor nut flush draw. And the spade. King of spades as well, backdoor nut flush draw, okay. Then how about the nines? Probably increases the frequen, no, doesn't. Actually decreases it again, alright, cool. Ace queen six, six, five, so we flop absolutely nothing. But we also would bluff without any equity here, basically. Wait, where's the poll? There it is. So does this make it into a bluffing range? Which seems quite busy as it is. So yeah, personally, I'll go with the check and I, my prediction would be, we're gonna see 100% check with this one. Wow, I wouldn't have, I wouldn't have guessed that, as you can tell, as you heard. Wow, just 100% wrong, huh? I got nothing. Like with the other ones, like sort of got it, we, we bluff with equity, like the one, the others we bluff with, we had, you know, a gutter or whatever. Guess the queen makes a difference, let's check out the ace, king, six, five, maybe? And before we do that, um. The rule for no pair, just bet works quite, it does seem to be that, uh, it does, yeah, good point. So once we don't have the, actually before we do that, let's go with the queen. Okay, so with the queen, we better that 100%. The, apparently the queen makes a difference. A big difference too, now with the king, we are, we are much more intent on checking. Again, bet the nut flush draw, bet the backdoor nut flush draw with a spade or without a spade blocker, the high frequency. With spades, lower frequency, yeah. So lower spades, uh, check at a low frequency. A bet at a low frequency, uh, excuse me, not spades, better the high frequency, okay, so the queen is what makes all the difference here, I would say. Blocking, you know, some draws. Alright. But, you know, no matter what the turn brings, we give up here, right? If we get called. Is there any, no, yeah, there's no turn where we want to put the rest of our money in, because now we're getting into quite a large part of this point. I guess in another eight, we sometimes maybe want to bluff, I don't know, what do, what do you guys think? Do we, like if we bet this, get called and another eight rolls off, would that be a spot where we just go for it? Make life as hard as possible for kings, queens? And do they fold enough to justify that? It might be the only turn I can think of where we maybe want to continue bluffing sometimes, right? I can't think of another one, like certainly not the 10, that's where it gets ugly. Maybe the 10 tools at a, at a lower frequency, but me. Floret said, yeah, I'd imagine on the eight, right? Cool. Thanks for the feedback, or for, not for the feedback, for your opinion, appreciate it. Oh wait, I finished the poll, that was not the idea, let's start it back up again. The nine possibly. With the queen and the, the six we held, and yeah, I could sometimes see that too. Unless it's the nine of spades, but yeah, that would make sense too, I guess. So here, unanimously betting currently, I think that's gonna be that's actually what it's gonna show us, 100%, I would say. So I'd go with the bet here as well. How many did we have wrong so far? We had a good deal of them wrong, so just as a heads up, the stream is gonna go on for another 20 minutes, then we'll head over to the Run It Ones channel, rate those guys, see what Phil is up to, because apparently they are not taking a break today. So yeah, just checked how many we had wrong, so for the last 10 minutes, we can go over the run, or the last 5 minutes, can go over the ones that we had wrong. Yeah, let's bet this at 100%, cool. We, we're getting somewhere with this, we're getting somewhere. And just as I'm saying that, we get a spot where I'm totally unsure. Could this be mixed strategy? You know what, we kind of block the eight by proxy, we block a lot of hands that have an eight in them. Eight, seven, six, you know, ten, nine, eight, stuff like that. Depending on my mood, that makes it 50/50, that's a good, that's a good enough answer too. I say bet and I wouldn't be shocked if this, well, at this point I wouldn't be shocked about anything. Maybe I'll just shut my mouth and click that button. Alright. 100%, no mixing going on here in solver world. Oh, now the suit window comes back up again, cool. Wait, damn it. Okay, cool. Uh, so which ones do we bet? The ones with no backdoors and no, yeah, just the ones that don't have any suit from this board. So unblocking all the flush draws, be it front or back. The ones with a weakish backdoor. Once with the high backdoor as well, apparently. Again, only one backdoor, not blocker to the spades. So generally speaking, we bet without spades. That seems to be it here. And once we gain a backdoor flush. Uh, we bet, it's, there's some mixing going on, still heavily favoring betting. Yeah, Luke confirming without the flush draw, yeah, cool. That's a very, on this board, very much a medium strong hand, right? Which generally speaking, want to check a lot. Right? Is that true on a paired board, on a board like this? Interestingly, we just checked out this hand where, like the very previous hand. Where without spades, we bet a lot. At 100%, but there we didn't have, didn't have an open ender. Not, well, we had a pair, right? Yeah, we had, we had the 10. The open ender, how much difference is it gonna make? Is it gonna make all the difference for the How much difference is it gonna make? Is it gonna make all the difference for the, I, I'm gonna, I, I agree with everybody saying checking. I would check too. Let's do this. Very much mixed now, interesting. Only undercard to the boards, yeah, except for the king, but yeah. So this one very much mixed again. Let's check out the suit variations. Which ones do we bet at the high frequency? The double suited ones with both front and backdoor flush, 100%. We've seen that a lot. The best spades we can have, also betting at 100%. Are they the king high spades that we don't bet? No. And then with the backdoor high flush draw, we also bet at a very high frequency. Punja, hey, 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 good to see you back. Welcome, sir. And that's when the mixing starts. So here with the open-ended straight flush, we again bet a lot. Now it's the other way around, betting then the flush draws, mostly checking the other, apparently, yeah. Because this time we, we do have a draw here. As well. We do have the open ender and blockers to opponents continuation range. Also blocking the eight by proxy quite a bit. Up to king eight, ten eight, nine eight, seven eight. Oh. And here, here, yeah, now it's exactly, it's pretty much exactly mirrored, you're right, Floret. Whereas with previous hands, we would bet if we don't have flushes blocked at all or very poorly. We now check them. So the, the open ender and addition to the pair makes all the difference here, apparently. Cool. Please always do correct me if I say something stupid. If that, hopefully that's not gonna be too much work. So now we have the gutter. No, sorry, we don't have a gutter. We have a blocker. The nut spades. We'll not flush draw. Can't call if we get raised, right? So maybe we wanna check here more. Could be a mix also, yeah, I could see that too. See, we still have to fold to a, to a raise, right, if you bet. Maybe not as interested in doing that, seeing that we do hold the nut flush draw. Luke Barter after long deliberation going for the aggressive route, which is being favored by chat right now. You know what? I, I think the jack makes a lot of, uh, a big difference here. I was gonna check it, but now you, you swayed me, or and I swayed myself. It had to bet fold. Now, yeah, that's the other thing. That's what had me hesitating for the longest time, but maybe the jack makes all the difference. We'll check out a, I think we show up with the ace, king, five, four, double suited here. As well, that we can three bet. So let's check this one. But then again, it's just a, yeah, I feel your pain. 100% bets, so no two ways about this one. So let's go for the ace, king, six, five. I believe that would be something that we show up with here. Confirmed, no pair, just bet. MP Adam, see you a bit. Thank you for checking out, man. Always, uh, pleasure to have you. Can she have ace, king? Yeah, can I do that though? I don't think that syntax is being supported with the, uh, spade here. Not, oh, it is. Never mind, never mind. Okay, so let's take out, um, aces, um, tens. Oh, actually, there's like a no pair thingy. Hang on, where's my? Syntax. Where's my syntax cheat, cheat? Wait, that's the wrong window. It's the no pair. Yeah, that one. Should give us a better picture, right? Wait, there's still aces in there? Oh, we could, wait. Yeah, it's the wrong thingy. No, it's not. It's the dollar sign. Where's your porn collection? There's porn on the internet? I, I heard rumors. Good to see you back. Heads up, Esther. Any footprints? We could end pairs, something like. Um, yeah, probably. Hang on. Like this? Oh, we still have aces in here. Okay, Luke Barter, something like this. Alright, I'll go for it. Thank you. Okay, that seems to work. Floret, that's the monker syntax. Yeah, they're still working on adding syntax, so. Right, so this time, air RR is, let me check my cheat sheet. Oh, RR is no pair. There you go. Just exclamation point RR would be no pair. Cool. So we probably, yeah, and now without an eight and without the 10, 10, we probably don't need. I don't think it'll make, just for my own curiosity, let's see if that makes any difference here. So right now it's 91, 91.7. Yeah, okay, that's already covered by the RR. Cool. So let's dive into this. Thanks, uh, Luke. Um, which ones do we, well, we don't check any at a high frequency. There's some we check mixed. But not that, you know, compared to all the hands, not many of them. So even though there is some mixing going on, would it just be, wouldn't it just be easier to, yeah, pure bet base, right? That's what I was trying to gather, because, you know, trying to figure out why this one gets checked and, you know, similar ones get better the high frequency. Not our, not worth our time, I would assume. There's some solver voodoo where it probably is gonna say like, okay, if I have one, then the nine of. Like he, the, the solver is gonna use some randomizer here, some randomizing card, I think, for the mixing, I would assume. Like, you know, with the nine of clubs, I check it 41% of the time, whatever. Cool, cool beans. And Floret wins again. Yeah, Floret, you're doing a good job. I hope I don't meteor at the tables all that often. I actually want to check though. Fair enough. Now, now we have the gutter and spades. Will be interesting. That ain't the bet. The, the, wouldn't be the worst takeaway, yeah. Yeah. So I think we'll do this one, then we go over the wrong ones. So here we have the gutter, we have spades, so we have, you know, we could make some stuff here. Is this gonna be 100% bet? Guess that'll be interesting. No, now with the spades, I would assume that that's the difference. We wanna check here a lot. Let's go for the suit variations. Two, just for Floret. Well, you're not wrong. It's still, you know, very much mixed, so you're not. I mean, not very much mixed. It's, uh, 70% in favor of checking. Which ones do we bet? Okay, again, we bet the ones with the front and the backdoor. That's fine. Or the ones where we're not to the, suited to the high card for the front door flush draw. And the weakest ones here again. The weakest ones here, 97%. Let's make it 100. And once we gain the queen high flush draw. We are less interested in betting here. My strategy is broken. This meant this, it's not your strategy, is, I, I think, I, I don't know. But it's, I can tell you that this bot broke me during the last stream. First stream I ever went out of being more confused than going in. Okay, let's go over the wrong ones, which I think is a neat feature of the bucket tour. If I can find the appropriate window. There you go. Start wrong. So, oh, no, I need to take this away? Kinos, hey, welcome back. Good to see you. Okay, let me put up the poll again. So all we know is that we did it wrong. So what's gonna be the dealio? So from what we've seen, it should be a bet at the high frequency, right? But I think this one was surprising. You know, going with what we've seen, I'm gonna go with the bet, but I seem to remember that this was like a 100% check. Let's see. Yeah, exactly. And I got nothing. Double gutter. Oh, we have the double. You have the double gutter. I didn't see the double. Um. That might be it. That might be it, Floret. Check out the suit variations for this one. Yeah. Better with the queen high spades and the decent frequency also with the other spades. So better with spades. And then the frequency goes way down. Most we bet is with the backdoor. When this one here, we just check. Additional question or like sort of bonus question with this hand here, let's take this one for example, which we bet 100%. What do we do if we get raised? Double gutter and the flush draw. Do we hate life and get it in? 10, 9, 6, we'll do in a second. Yeah, good point. Call. Right, right, when we don't have to get the queen. That's a good point. Yeah, but how about this one? Do we, you know? Curse the gods and get it in or? Without spades. Yeah, we'll, we'll check that. Probably better to bet faulted one still, huh? You know what? That might, yeah. I, now Luke Barter is saying, I don't think we bet fault. On the other hand, we block all the draws that could raise us, or at least, you know, some of them at least. Blocking all the, all the straightening cards. And blocking a 10. Take a screenshot of that one and maybe ask it in the mastermind later. Okay, screenshot taken. And now the king 10, 9, 6. Yeah, that'll be interesting. 10, 9, 6 with spades on top must be get it in, yeah. Spades on top and the backdoor. Like in, in that very specific example. Probably. Probably never gonna be too happy, I, I would assume. Wait, no, it was king 10, 9, 6. Okay, so this one we checked at 100% except if we have spades. And now without the queen. Hang on, let's just get a general overview for the, for the numbers here. So right now it's 70, 30. With the queen, it go, the betting frequency goes way down, yeah. Good shout, checking the king 10. And there we bet the weakest ones, plus the one with the front of the backdoor again. Cool. Alright, alright. Bring us to the next one we had wrong. Yeah, put the poll up. Yeah. Luke Barter, thank you very much. Alright, alright, I'll talk to you in Discord. Uh, thanks for showing up, man, and participating. Uh, it's been a huge help. Thanks for all the insights too. So we have one vote for bet. Any more takers? For the record, I'm going with the bet here as well. I don't remember the result of this one. We do have the backdoor diamond store, which are not great. Hey PVC! Oh. Yeah PVC, welcome back. Bet, I starting to get some doubts because I think we betted last time as well. That it shows up in our, you know, wrong column here. I'm gonna go with the bet. 100%, okay, cool, cool, cool. Long enough, 8x, yeah. There was some backup, good bluff candidate, yeah, yeah. Folded to a raise, but, you know, we can continue, uh, we could, could make a hand with the nine, we could pick up a king, which would be pretty fine to check behind again, uh, on now that we would have picked up some additional equity. Yeah, could just reevaluate turns, basically. Alright, alright, I believe I'm 100% certain now what we should do here. Since we had the spot, obviously. Wonder what you guys believe or what you guys remember for those of you who've been here. When we had that spot, uh, few minutes, a few, an hour ago, whatever. That's a good point. I like the additional thought there, that we are unblocking spades, so make it easier for our opponent to have something he wants to call, especially for one third pot. So I believe this was 100% bet. And let's check out the suit variations. I don't think even suit variations made a difference here. Okay, there's one that we check. Well, it's all, yeah, no, you're right. You're right. Actually, they do make all the difference. So there's only one combination of spades we could have, nine and a five, obviously. A good shout, Kinos. Nice, well done. You're right, everything gets bet except for spades where we go like, okay, now we block even this, so we really want him to have, to catch up with some. Nice answer. This one. I believe I remember. Which is of course the whole point of this trading session, to improve. And I think I did in this wa- uh, spot. A lot of betting going on. Floret changing his mind to checking. Floret going with the check after the, uh, after all said and done. And I do too, and I believe, excuse me. I believe this was 100% check. There was no mixing going on here. Yeah. Let's check out some suit variations here. I would assume the weaker ones, we, there is some betting I would assume the weaker ones, we, there is some betting going on here. Some 100% betting without flush draws, yep. Exactly, and this, the more front or backdoor equity we pick up, the less likely is it, it is that we want to bet. You were scared of, yeah. Cool. How about this one? Let me put up the poll yet again. Gonna keep an eye on Run at Once, they're not live yet, so we're not missing anything from the Gaffon challenge. Ah, what was this one? I honestly, I don't remember. We have the gutter to the straight flush, yeah. I believe that one was a check too. I don't think it was mixed. I don't think this one was mixed. Give us 100% check. Yeah. And we went for the bet here, which is probably with the king high flush we're betting. Yeah. Yeah. Needle. I, I'm so happy that now I have feeling, I understand the spot at least a little bit better. After the last stream, I really didn't. Okay, the Gaffon, so let's do this, the last one, the Gaffon challenge is on. Gaffon is down 600. Oh, they're just playing a very first hands there. So, I'll actually put in the, the raid already. Uh, but let's do this last one here nevertheless. Um. Think the backdoor made a difference, but I don't remember what it was. Experiment, we need protection, have some decent rounds, Kina says. The jack does make a difference, what was the difference? I think we check. And without the now we bet at 100%. Alright, alright, alright. Yesterday's results, OMFG, in the end, uh, he was ahead 3k, so we got double the splash. Okay. Let's do, take a look at the suit variations before the raid auto kicks in. Which ones do we bet at a high fre, check at a high frequency, basically? The king high, uh, flush draw, okay, and with the okay, now it's also very, now it's starting to be very much mixed here. If we don't have spade blockers, just the backdoor. Alright, cool. Well, thanks for watching, everybody. I'll be back tomorrow afternoon, very likely, at least, such is the plan, with another study stream, so if that floats your boat, then join back in. Thanks for watching, and that's over to the Run at Once channel. See you, guys.